Nick, Darren. You're all right, we'll talk. If you walk around, yes. When you walk around, yes.
Good evening, colleagues. Welcome to this meeting of the Borough Council. I'm first required to inform you that this meeting has been recorded and livestreamed. Welcome to those members of the public watching from home. Despite the coming of the so-called Freedom Day on the 19th of July, and changes to the rules on self-isolation from the 16th of August, protecting the health and wellbeing of elected members, our workforce and our communities continues to be a priority for the council. This is why we are choosing to continue to follow social distancing at this meeting of the Borough Council. It is prudent for continuity of service that we must continue to do so, and it is important that we all take the steps to reduce the spread of coronavirus in the community in order to keep life moving. I would like, sorry, I would ask members, staff and members of the public attending today to wear their face coverings at all times unless they are exempt, as face masks are still advised by both the NHS and the government for busy indoor areas and crowded spaces. Toilet facilities are in the corridor just outside the main hall. If the fire alarm sounds, please leave the room by the emergency exit doors to my left and make your way to the main car park. Staff will assist you with this. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphone available. This is to ensure everyone in the hall can hear you and that residents viewing this meeting via the livestreaming can hear everybody taking part. Members will know that each desk is equipped with an individual microphone and some simple instructions on how to operate it. To ensure the sound system is effective, members must switch off their mics, sorry, members must switch on their microphones using the central button when speaking. Ensure that they are close enough to the microphone when speaking and that they speak directly into it. If a member does speak during the course of the meeting, they should pull down their face masks while speaking and return after addressing the meeting. Can I also take this opportunity to remind members that the code of conduct applies to this meeting? And we should at all times demonstrate good conduct. We all have a collective responsibility to live up to the standards expected of us as councillors and community leaders. A councillor who speaks will not accuse anyone of improper motives or use offensive language or expressions. All of the council procedure rules apply to this meeting of the Borough Council, including waiting for me as chair to give permission to speak. The only exception to this is the requirement for members to stand whilst speaking. In order to assist with the sound quality and audibility, may I please ask that all members remain seated at all times during the course of the meeting? May I please ask members, officers and members of the public to limit disturbance wherever possible? Members should please mute their microphones to reduce feedback and background noise when they are not speaking, which will make the meeting easier to follow. Please also ensure that mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent during the meeting. Members are reminded that full council today will only deal with business that is set out in the summons as per the council procedure rules. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by physically raising their hand and being invited to speak by me as chair. When a councillor speaks at full council, they must address the meeting through the mayor. All other councillors must remain silent whilst a member is speaking. As per the council procedure rules, if the mayor stands during any debate of full council, any councillor speaking at that time must stop immediately and the meeting must be silent. When members do speak, and because of the size of the room, I would ask that all members identify themselves for the benefit of any member of the public or press who are observing the meeting before speaking. Voting will be managed by the monitoring officer and strategy and democracy officers miniting the meeting. If an item does not appear to be contentious, members will be asked whether any member disagrees or wishes to abstain. In a situation where there is a dissension vote, sorry, a dissenting voice, a vote will be taken. If any item requires a vote, the monitoring officer will either ask for a show of hands or will read out the names of each member in alphabetical order to ask them how they wish to vote. Each member will need to unmute their microphones before speaking or keeping their arms raised until the vote is taken and then mute their microphones again. The monitoring officer will record the outcome of the voting and announce it at this meeting. I will now ask each member to confirm their attendance by undertaking a roll call and ask all participating members to please reply present. I have received apologies from the following councillors: councillor Boyack, Brady, Dick, Gibson, Neil Maxwell, Punchin, Stonehouse and Sewell. Councillor Amor.
Present.
Councillor Atkinson.
Present.
Councillor Bell.
Present.
Councillor Barclay.
Present.
Councillor Best.
Present.
Councillor Bristow.
Present.
Councillor Dean.
Present.
Councillor Dix.
Present.
Councillor Dixon.
Present.
Councillor Donaldson. Councillor Duncan. Councillor Ellison.
Present.
Councillor Flynn.
Present.
Councillor Foreman. Councillor Foster. Councillor Francis.
Present.
Councillor Hamilton.
Present.
Councillor Heatherington.
Present.
Councillor Huntley.
Present.
Councillor Keegan.
Present.
Councillor Kennedy.
Present.
Councillor Kilgaw.
Present.
Councillor Leesk. Councillor Malcolm. Councillor Annie Maxwell. Councillor McCabe.
Present.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor Melling.
Present.
Councillor P Milburn.
Present.
Councillor Peacock.
Present.
Councillor Portouse.
Present.
Councillor Proudlock.
Present.
Councillor Purvis. Councillor Roberts.
Present.
Councillor Sewell, I've got apologies for, sorry. Councillor Smith.
Present.
Councillor Strike.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Traynor.
Present.
Councillor A Walsh.
Apologies.
Thank you. Councillor M Walsh.
Present.
Councillor Welsh.
Present.
And councillor West. Yes, councillor West. Thank you. The first item of business is declarations of.
Madam Mayor. Councillor Potts is present.
Jay Potts, I'm sorry, that was. Sorry, that was a clerical error. Councillor Potts, you are present. We've got that recorded. Thank you. We do apologise. The first item of business is declaration of interest. No declarations of interest have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declarations before we move on to the next item of business? Yes, councillor Bell?
Thank you, madam chair. It's a non-procurnary interest in item four, the Treasury Management Report annually. It's paragraph forty-eight because the Bolden School is mentioned in that paragraph on the PFI contract and I am the local authority representative on that board of governors. I can remain and take part in any discussions. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Bell. If you have.
Chair, chairman, Mr Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
Yes, I have, I would want to declare an interest as a member of the North East Purchasers Organisation in respect of item five. This is not a DP, it's a possible procurnary interest and therefore I can participate in any discussion and vote. I would also declare an interest as a member of the North East Regional Employers Organisation Executive Committee in respect of item eight.
Thank you, councillor Malcolm.
Chair, maybe I need to declare an interest for Bolden School.
Councillor Strike.
The same item as councillor Bell and the governor on Bolden School.
Okay, councillor Strike, we'll note that. Thank you. If you have a disclosure procurnary interest in any item which prevents you from participating in the debate and any vote, you will need to leave the hall during the item. Once the item has been considered, an officer will come to get you and bring you back into the meeting. Item two on the agenda. The next item is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 22nd of July 2021. Are they accepted as a correct record?
Agreed.
Thank you. The next item of business is the mayor's announcements and communications. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome to the council councillor Potts. I very much look forward to working with you in the future, councillor Potts. On behalf of myself and all elected members, I would also like to offer a very warm welcome to our new chief executive, Jonathan Tum. We are very happy to have you here with us, Jonathan. Finally, council will recall the recent report on progress relating to our aspiration to be a carbon neutral council by 2030. Our ambitious target is underpinned by a comprehensive strategy. The initial five-year action plan contained in the Sustainable South Tyneside Strategy. I am delighted to advise council that strategy and the innovation project that supports this, its effective delivery, such as the Viking Energy Network in Jarrow, the Hebbin District Mine Water Scheme, having now received national recognition, been shortlisted at this year's APSI, the Association of Public Service Excellence Awards, in the category of best climate action initiative. This reflects the hard work across the council, between services, elected members. We wish the team good luck at the awards events taking place later this week. The next item of business to consider, a report of the corporate director of Business and Resources on the Treasury Management Annual Report 2020-2021. I will ask councillor Bell to formally move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, madam mayor. The treasury management is the process by which the council's cash flow, investments and borrowing activities are managed. The council complies with the requirements of the Chartered Institute of Public Finance and Accountancy Code of Practice on Treasury Management. The code requires full council to receive an annual report on treasury management activity. This report covers the economic background, the movement in interest rates and the treasury management activities for 2020-2021. Despite the economic uncertainty created by Brexit and Covid-19, the treasury management activity for the year was all delivered within budget and in line with the treasury management strategy. A large proportion of the council's capital expenditure has been financed by borrowing. The borrowing at the year end was £625.8 million against a borrowing requirement of £688.8 million. The difference of £63 million was financed temporarily from the council's cash balances. During 2021, one long-term loan for £5 million was taken and £44.5 million of debt was repaid. Council are therefore recommended to note this report. Thank you, madam mayor.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
I'm sorry, who spoke? Thank you, councillor Duncan. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Bristow?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd just like to make a brief comment on point forty-four relating to the council's management of the Tynan Weir Pension Fund. The Tynan Weir Pension Fund is still heavily invested in the fossil fuel industry whose future is looking less and less assured, especially in light of the recent IPCC report, which has stated in no uncertain terms that our continued dependence on fossil fuels needs to end and it needs to happen as quickly as possible. Fossil fuel companies can't be viewed as a safe, stable investment as they may once have been and the Tynan Weir Pension Fund's continued investment in them is cause for concern. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bristow. Councillor Bell, do you wish to respond?
Okay, just to note councillor Bristow's comments, and I know he did raise this at the last council and a written response was sent to him, but we have noted his comments and we will actually keep a close eye on what is happening with that within the pension fund. We just actually manage the fund, but we will keep a close eye on it and his comments have been noted. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, madam mayor, and thank you councillor Bell for the report. I have to say, these debt numbers, absolutely breathtaking. £780 million in debt. Can I repeat that? Because people need to let this sink in. £780 million in debt. But my question is, can you confirm how much of the £688 million that we have in loan debt has been taken out on loan periods of fifty years? The rate for fifty-year loans, as I understand it, is now rising. How much of a financial impact will this recent rate rise have in respect to further debt repayments? Can I also ask councillor Bell, in the light of the figures in this report, specifically the debt repayments this year, have an incredible £44.5 million? Again, I'll repeat that. £44.5 million is what we've paid out for loan debt in this last year alone. And also to preempt the usual rhetoric from the Labour Group about government cuts being the one and only reason for this situation. My question is, how much of this debt was built under the previous Labour government? And how much of this debt was built under the current government? We now find ourselves competing for the highest UK debt level with cities like Nottingham, Sheffield and Greater Manchester, authorities that have two, three, four times our population. I think it's time we had some clarity on this situation and how we found ourselves under this crippling debt. Thank you.
Councillor Bell, would you like to respond?
Thank you, madam mayor. Obviously, I don't have the exact figures for the fifty-year loans. A lot of our loans are fifty years, but I will get that information to councillor Thompson. Obviously, the rates were low when these loans were taken and we are keeping an eye on what is actually happening with the increase in the rates. But interest rates at the moment are still very low. The £44.5 million repaid in the loans this year, how much was from the previous government? I'm sorry, I just don't have that information. And again, we'll get that to councillor Thompson as soon as possible. I think we've got to bear in mind that our capital programme for the borough is very, very intense. We have got a massive programme ahead of us and therefore it is prudent to actually go into the borrowing market because of the rates that have been so low in order to continue our vision for the borough. But I will get the information to councillor Thompson that is requested. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, madam mayor. I've just got a couple of questions really for clarity for my own purposes. In paragraph eighteen, you talk about the council's borrowing to finance is pooled into a consolidated loans fund and then individual schemes are financed out of there. I wonder if I could get the link or the information on what the individual schemes are rather than just having it as a consolidated loan. I'd like to see the breakdown. Under twenty-four, you've mentioned that there's one new loan of £5 million. I'd like to know what that £5 million is for. Where am I? I'd be interested in who we lend to and which is the bank that was removed, but I'm sure you probably can't tell me that in a public meeting. In paragraph forty-seven, it mentions that we've got one finance lease in the form of a long-term property. Again, I'd be interested to know what that long-term lease is. The equality and diversity checks that you say have been carried out, can you tell me if they're published anywhere? Because I think it's important that they are. Even if no implications have been found, it is important that they are available for the public to see. And finally, and this is in relation to the summary of activity on the council, on the South Tyneside Consolidated Loans Fund, the table. Next to the first asterisk, you've got that the opening and closing balances for fixed rate debt include lender's option stroke borrower option loans, which can strictly be classified as variable rate loans. It goes on to say that these loans give the lender the option of changing the interest rate at predetermined dates. If this option is exercised, the borrower then has the option of repaying the loan. However, the loan structure and the current interest rate environment means that for practical purposes, these options are unlikely to be exercised. Therefore, that we've classed them as fixed rate loans. My concern is that given the predictions are that interest loans will be increasing in the near future and potentially increasing significantly, I'd like to know how much of those loans are actually lender option stroke borrower option loans rather than actual fixed rate loans. Now, I'm not expecting you to be able to give me the answer to that now, but I would like, if possible, if you could come back to me on that and let me know what the terms are of those loans, for example, when it is that the lenders can decide to increase the interest rates if they wish to. I just think that would be useful going forward so that we can understand the full extent of the borrowing implications that the council has. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bell.
Thank you, madam mayor. Obviously, a lot of the information that councillor Hamilton wants will be sent to her. But I can say that the breakdown of the lease is actually for Cleaton Park. It's the community library part of Cleaton Park which the council has taken the lease on. That actually runs out in 2034, so there's still quite a long way to go for that, but that is for Cleaton Park. I'll get the information about the consolidated loan schemes because obviously I don't have the full breakdown of what is involved in that. And also the £5 million loan was taken out because the interest rates were so low that it is just to help with our capital programme moving forward, but I will get a breakdown for councillor Hamilton for that. Obviously, the equality and diversity checks are undertaken on everything that we do. And obviously, I'm not sure whether they are publicly available, but I will find that out for her. And obviously, the interest rate, her concerns are noted regarding the fixed rate debt. How much the loans are within the fixed rate obviously will be sent to councillor Hamilton as well as the other answers that she's requested. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Thompson?
Thanks, madam mayor. Just to confirm, councillor Bell, the £5 million that was recently taken out, that was taken out because of the low interest rates? That was taken out at the rising fifty-year term?
I believe so, but obviously we'll confirm that. But I do believe it was taken as a fifty-year loan because the interest rate for that was so low at the time. It was prudent of us to do that for the capital programme. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Councillor Atkinson, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, madam mayor. I think actually the answers to some of these questions are in the report. So, the one, point twenty-four, one new loan of £5 million was taken out from the Public Wards Loans Bill during 2021 at a rate of 1.37% over a period of fifty years. And with regards to councillor Thompson earlier making, you know, a big statement about the £44 million repaid, at twenty-five, it tells you that twenty-four and a half million of that was related to short-term loans taken at the end of 1920 to help manage cash flow and payments to local businesses under the government's Covid-19 support scheme. Because you will recall, we had to help our businesses and support them. And, you know, I think that was very prudent to do so because otherwise, if we hadn't taken those loans out, government money was not coming in fast enough for us to do so. So I think that will answer that part of the question. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Atkinson. Is the report noted?
Noted.
Thank you. The next item of business is to consider a report of the corporate director of Business and Resources on the procurement strategy for twenty-one to twenty-four. I will ask councillor Bell to formally move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, madam mayor. This report informs members of the introduction of a new procurement strategy. The strategy outlines our priorities for 2021 to 2024 and shows how procurement will contribute to achieving the South Tyneside vision and its community priorities. The council spends around £190 million a year on goods, works and services provided by external organisations and we have a duty to make sure that this spending represents value for money for the residents of the borough. The strategy sets out our overall vision for procurement together with the strategic outcomes, key objectives and priorities that will help us turn our vision into reality. It supports social value responsibilities such as business growth and economic recovery in the borough and will contribute to achieving a robust economy by engaging with the local supply base through initiatives such as Supply South Tyneside and making our processes accessible to a range of suppliers. Additionally, the strategy will seek environmentally friendly procurement and support the council's carbon plan to be neutral by 2030. It will deliver value for money while still maintaining quality, which is more important than ever in the current economic climate. The strategy also recognises the importance of having robust governance and risk management in place and move that council approve the new procurement strategy as presented in the papers. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Councillor Heatherington, thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Yes, councillor Francis?
Thank you, madam mayor. Colleagues will remember that in February this year, I brought to full council a fair tax motion which was passed unanimously. And the social responsibility section of this report contains a number of measures that I agree should be in place. I agree should be in place, including, as mentioned, supporting local suppliers, tackling modern slavery and taking our climate emergency commitments into account. But I wonder if our commitments and resolutions from that fair tax motion just a few months ago ought to be included more clearly in this document so we live up to that commitment that we made in February.
Councillor Bell?
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. So noted, and we will obviously take that on board councillor Francis's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm not entirely sure whether this covers commissioning or just procurement. My questions may vary depending which it covers, so I don't know if councillor Bell would like to answer that before I actually ask the question?
Yeah, it does just cover procurement within the council for the goods and services that we actually contract in.
Right, okay, thank you. That is very helpful. The questions that I've got then are a little bit less, as I'm sure you can imagine. I'm slightly concerned, possibly like councillor Francis, but from a different perspective about social responsibilities. I've looked through here, through the report, through the strategy itself, and at no point can I find where anything to do with equalities is included. I know there's the bit about the equality implications of the report and how it says that, you know, all suppliers are treated equitably and that our tender evaluation process are transparent and non-discriminatory. But what I'm more concerned about is that we don't have any equality requirement on those bidding for tenders. So, under the Social Value Act, one of the things we are supposed to look at is equality implications. For example, we should be asking for things like equality policies, how... bidders? That's not the right word, I know, at this moment in time. How those bidding for contracts make sure that people from various different groups aren't excluded. The council I work for is just in the process of including white ribbon accreditation in its, or white ribbon policies in its procurement policy, which is obviously is about domestic violence and abuse. And I know we've got some really good things in there around modern slavery and things and tackling climate emergency, but I really do think we should be looking at putting a bit more in about ensuring equal treatment and equal opportunities for all of our residents in South Tyneside in our procurement process and in our procurement, in our tender documents so that we can measure that and ensure that no groups are being excluded because of that. So I'd just be grateful if you could maybe have a look and consider that. And I was also just wondering if we have different categories and if the rules are different for different categories. Again, that is more to do with commissioning mainly, but there are sometimes things whereby there might be a slightly different procurement process for very large contracts or, for example, for a building contract compared to something which is a smaller service or something like that. And I was wondering if we do define things or break things up by categories and where the stakeholder and community engagement is in developing these procurement strategies to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to bid for contracts. I think that's it.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. Councillor Bell, would you like to respond?
Thank you, madam mayor. I mean, obviously, the social responsibilities and the social value is built into this strategy. It has all been taken into consideration. And the equal opportunities, they're all part of the social value which is included in this report. But obviously, councillor Hamilton's comments have been noted. I'm not sure what she meant by the categories within the report. We do actually split a lot of our contracts down into lots, and we do a lot of work with our small and medium-sized employers to make sure that they are equipped and are able to bid for contracts and the smaller lots. The larger contracts, they don't tend to bid for, but we do help them if they want to do that. But I'm not sure what she meant by the categories. We do treat each, you know, bid and each contract on its own merits, and this strategy will actually be used for all of those. We are doing, as I say, a lot of work with our small and medium employers. We do hold a lot to account with the Supply South Tyneside and our local businesses, and that goes for their subcontractors as well. I think all too often, we get a contract where the contractor will subcontract outside of the borough, and we've done a lot of work to actually cut down on that and to stop that from happening. So I think that will actually fall into the categories that councillor Hamilton was talking about as well. But if there is anything else, if she could just get in touch with me and I will make sure that she gets the appropriate answer. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is the report agreed?
Agreed.
The report is agreed. Thank you. We now move on to item six. The next item of business is to consider a report of the director of public health on the surge vaccination in South Tyneside. I will ask councillor Heatherington to formally move the report. Councillor Heatherington?
Thank you, madam mayor. Good evening, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Before I deliver this report, I would like to pay tribute to all South Tyneside residents who have volunteered for our COVID Champions Programme and the volunteer COVID marshals who have worked in the vaccine hubs and all the work that they have put in not only over the two surge weekends but throughout the pandemic. Also, to frontline and key workers in the health sector and those delivering other essential services who quite often have put their own health at risk and their lives on the line. And on behalf of us here tonight, I would like to give them our most sincere thanks. I don't need to remind elected member colleagues of the impact COVID has had on all of us over the past 18 months and how the vaccine programme has played a huge part in our road to recovery. It's important to acknowledge, however, that access to the vaccination programme should be as easy as possible to ensure all eligible residents can take up the offer should they choose to do so. To address a period of high infection in July, South Tyneside, along with other North East councils, were offered additional support from the national government as an enhanced response area. Locally, it was determined that the most beneficial support to the borough would be a surge vaccination programme to enhance the rollout of the vaccine with specific focus on those areas of the borough where uptake has been the lowest, as well as targeting young adults where the uptake had been slow. The paper presented to you today is a summary of the surge vaccination activity that took place over two weekends, the 6th to the 8th of August and the 13th to the 15th of August. I'm pleased to share that the team of 25 staff from Resilient worked alongside our local COVID champions, local authority and NHS staff to reach 4,500 households via door-knocking to engage with the residents to encourage the uptake of the vaccine and to provide information on where it could be accessed via local pharmacies, vaccine hubs or pop-up clinics. Across the weekend of the 6th to the 8th of August, the surge vaccination activity focused on Simonside and Reckendijk, South Shields Town Centre and our coastline. The team had 1,500 conversations with the residents in Simonside and Reckendijk and over 5,000 in the town centre and on the coastline. In addition to this, the team also distributed 200 lateral flow test kits and signposted 50 people to the pop-up Vaccine XL Health Bus on the Sunday in the Dunes Car Park. The second weekend of activity focused on Bolden Lane and the Hebburn area, with over 3,000 households visited. Unfortunately, there was no pop-up clinic available for this weekend, but the staff were able to signpost to local pharmacies and the vaccine hubs. The total number of vaccines delivered across the surge vaccination weekends can be seen in paragraph 13 of the report, with over 2,600 vaccines given. The table shows the breakdown of the vaccine delivery for the first and second doses, as well as comparing vaccine activity to the previous weekend prior to the surge vaccination programme. You will see there was a significant increase on the previous weekend, which is positive news. However, I would like to highlight a couple of caveats that may have influenced the increased uptake. During the weekend of the 6th to 8th of August, the eligibility was extended to all 16 and 17-year-olds for their first doses. And the weekend of the 13th to the 15th of August, all 20 to 29-year-olds were able to come forward for their second dose. Therefore, the surge vaccination activity may not have been the sole reason for the increase in the take-up, and those eligible may have come forward regardless, but it was a contributory factor to the increase. We can also say that the use of the pop-up XL Health Bus was popular among our younger residents, which could have also contributed to the high uptake in this age group. Further work is being carried out to measure South Tyneside's vaccine activity with other North East local authorities to see if further evidence can be gathered to compare with areas where the surge vaccination was not present. Overall, the surge vaccination work has been a positive experience with a high number of residents engaging with the teams, providing positive feedback and responses to the vaccine programme. The learning from the activities will be implemented by the Health Inclusion Group to inform further outreach activities and continue to ensure no one is left behind. Council are asked to note this report and to continue to support the vaccine programme, ensuring we address any inequalities in relation to access and uptake of the vaccine. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, councillor Heatherington. Is that seconded? Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Okay, thank you. Is the report noted? Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues.
We move on to item seven. The next item of business is to consider a report of the head of Corporate and External Affairs on the appointment of lay member and independent person to the Standards Committee. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, madam mayor. Obviously, this report is presented to council this evening, and it is a statutory obligation that we look at this report. The recommendation in the report, Chair, is to actually appoint two members. One is an independent person and one is a lay member. The recommendation to council is to appoint Mr Macabre as the independent person to the Standards Committee and appoint Hayley Hall as a lay member to the Standards Committee. Members are asked to agree the report, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Are there any members that wish to speak on the report? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, madam mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank those involved in the preparation of the report and obviously to thank those who've previously served as lay members and independent persons, roles where I'm sure the work involved is not always matched with equivalent amounts of reward or recognition. But I'm slightly concerned by a couple of things in there and just have a couple of questions. So firstly, point two of the report states that, under the provisions of the Localism Act 2011, the council is required by law to appoint at least one independent person to assist the council in promoting and maintaining high standards of conduct among its elected members. But later in the report, we learn that the previously appointed independent person retired from that position in 2017, and since then, we've not had a directly appointed independent person and have had to call on those from neighbouring authorities. So my first question would be, if we're required by law to appoint at least one independent person, why has it taken four years to do so? And then, secondly, point 31 of the report states that there's an opportunity to seek to appoint one further independent person, and appointing two independent persons minimises the risk of unavailability due to absence or conflict of interest. And I would also point out that appointing two independent persons might avoid the situation we've been in for the past four years, where we've had to borrow independent persons from our neighbours. So my second question would be, bearing all of this in mind, should we be seeking to recruit a second independent person in order to safeguard us against repeating past mistakes? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Dixon, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Two elements to the question. I'll do the latter first. There was only one person who actually applied for that position, councillor Francis, so that's why that independent person has been appointed. Secondly, with regard to the delay in actually the appointment of the independent person, as you are aware, there was an awful lot of detailed work went on with regard to the constitution. Consequently, of course, you know, there was an intervening period. We did actually secure arrangements with the neighbouring authority to endorse the council to ensure that we had fulfilled our statutory obligation. But moving forward, madam mayor, we do have that independent person, if agreed this evening, in post.
If I could just come back on that. So the work on the constitution, though, I believe, was only really in the last couple of years, 2019 onwards, so I'm still concerned about the gap between 2017, the previous person stepping down. And if we only had one applicant, is it not worth sort of re-advertising for that role just in order to make some kind of safeguard against being in that same position again?
Yep, thank you, madam mayor. I mean, obviously, I will note your comments, but thankfully, we will have an independent person and a lay person in post if agreed with council this evening. Thank you, madam mayor.
Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Hamilton?
Yeah, I guess it just follows on from what councillor Francis said there. It appears from point 15 that we only actually advertised it in the local press and on the council website. I'm not sure what's meant by the local press. Was that just the Gazette? And if it was, maybe we should look at advertising further afield. And this is just a suggestion. I think we should have two, and I think we should re-advertise. But possibly, it might be worth looking to see if we could re-advertise so that they were on different terms, so that perhaps the next, it's a two-year fixed term, isn't it, I think? So perhaps the next person would start a year later, so you would always have one experienced person in position. And then, kind of, the turnover would be one per year turnover rather than trying to find two every two years, which may prove to be more difficult. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but it's just a thought.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, madam mayor. Councillor Hamilton, it was actually advertised in the Chronicle as well, but obviously, if we do look to appoint a second independent person, we could possibly look at more regional, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is the report agreed?
Excuse me, madam mayor.
Sorry, councillor Thompson?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just to give my thanks to the retiring Mrs Dark from the Standards Committee you work with, very nice lady, just like to make a statement on thanking her for what she did. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Milburn?
Thank you, madam mayor. Thank you, councillor Dixon, for presenting the report. I just wanted to pick up on, not so much on the report, but the attachment in the code of conduct for elected members on page 84. And point one, point two, it ends with, South Tyneside council also want individuals from a range of backgrounds and circumstances to put themselves forward to be councillors. Now, I was slightly concerned with that in that we say this because it's in our constitution, but do we really mean this? And I would like to understand what South Tyneside council are doing to promote that sort of aspiration from people from different backgrounds, et cetera. Is it a real appetite to help those in full-time work by flexing meeting times? For example, the last conversation we had in this chamber did not reflect that, in my view. And I was just thinking that I would be interested to see a data-generated report to detail the status quo of our range in backgrounds and circumstances as we stand at the moment. That was just a comment.
Thank you, councillor Milburn. Councillor Dixon?
I haven't got the microphone on. Sorry, councillor Milburn. I mean, you know, we are an inclusive council and we want to encourage as many people from every background to basically, you know, come forward to be elected members. You know, you're all right. You know, you did put that motion at the last meeting with regard to flexible working, but this is something that we could consider under the Constitution Committee moving forward so that if you're comfortable with that, we can bring it as an agenda item. Councillor Milburn, to move forward.
Thank you, yeah. That's a good idea. Thanks.
Okay, thanks very much. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Is the report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you. We move on to item eight. The next item of business is to consider a report of the chief executive and head of paid service to amend the membership of council, of, sorry, of council committee. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, colleagues, following the by-election for the Fergate and Headworth Ward on the twenty-ninth of July and the recent disqualification of an elected member, the political balance of the council has changed. As a result, the council is legally required to recalculate proportionality as soon as reasonably possible to ensure that the committees that are subject to political balance are correctly constituted. Colleagues, the report explains the impact of the by-election in table, in the table at paragraph seven. The implications is illustrated by the table at paragraph thirteen. And the nominations for appointment are listed in the table at paragraph fourteen. The council also, the report also details a number of small amendments required to the council's constitution, including to regional scrutiny arrangements and to other outside bodies. Madam Mayor, I move the report and would urge colleagues to agree the recommendations set out in paragraph thirty-four. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
I'm sorry, I can't hear who's speaking.
Jojo.
Councillor Kilgore, thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I just say that in the light of the new Labour Group leadership and the promises of new culture with messages of we will work together with the opposition, it's very disappointing to see that the only chair held by opposition is at the first opportunity under the new leadership being taken away by the Labour Group. Very disappointing.
That will be noted, councillor Thompson, unless you want to come back, councillor Dixon? No, that will be noted, thank you. Is the report agreed? Thank you.
Sorry councillor Thompson, it was actually a vice chair position, just for clarification. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. The next item of business is to consider a report, the head of Corporate and External Affairs, which proposes a new protocol and guidance note on gifts and hospitality for elected members. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, in January twenty twenty-one, the Constitution Committee agreed that there was a need for some additional work in respect of information and guidance available to elected members with regards to the gifts and hospitality process for both members and officers. The report provides details of a proposed protocol and guidance note to provide all the necessary information to allow elected members and officers to make informed decisions as to how to record and declare any gifts and hospitality. Madam Mayor, I move the report and again urge colleagues to agree to the recommendations set out in paragraph twenty-one of the report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, just, Madam Mayor, just a couple of questions, just for clarity, really. Under paragraph eighteen, it says the council should maintain two registers in respect of the acceptance of offers of gifts and hospitality, one for elected members and the other for senior council officers. What I was wondering is how less senior council officers hospitality or gifts will be recorded? For example, as I've said, I work for another local authority, I do sometimes receive gifts and I do have to inform my manager of it. Would it be that that would be the same process here? As I say, these are just for clarity. On the first page of the protocol and guidance, it talks about receiving hospitality and gifts. And I wonder if that, if the declarations include if you receive gifts or hospitality from another councillor, do you have to declare those or would they be classed as friends, gifts from a friend or similar? And finally, this is on the register of members' personal interests. It asks for the name and address of the person or organisation who has provided the offer, provided or offered the gift or hospitality. And I think I'm interested in knowing whether those addresses will always be made public. And the reason I'm asking, it might seem quite silly, but for example, I've received on a couple of occasions a bouquet of flowers from residents after I've helped them. Now, I've always estimated that they were probably worth less than twenty-five pounds, but some bouquets of flowers might be worth more than twenty-five pounds. And if I was to declare that, would that individual member of the public's address then be made public? Because I think there might be some concerns about that from members of the public if their actual home addresses were going to be published on the website or on a list. Or would it just be something like you do with councillors where it would say, Mister and Missus so-and-so registered at an address in South Shields or something like that?
Councillor Dixon?
Thanks councillor Hamilton. First question, the answer is yes. Okay. The second question, no, unless it's actually council business. And the latter, the latter question is, no, it wouldn't be made public with regard to the final question.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is the report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We move on to item ten. The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. One question has been received under this rule. The question is from councillor Glen Thompson. Councillor Thompson, would you like to put the question to the relevant member?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In January twenty twenty, councillor Francis submitted an opposition motion in relation to fireworks and their impact. Subsequently, an amendment was proposed by councillor Atkinson for the Labour Group, which was agreed and became the substantive motion. The substantive motion stated that South Tyneside council resolves, one, to require all public firework displays held on local authority land and request all other firework displays within the local authority area to be advertised in advance of the event. Two, to actively promote a public awareness campaign about the impact of fireworks on animal welfare and vulnerable people. Three, to write to the UK government urging them to introduce legislation to limit the maximum noise level of fireworks to ninety dB. And four, to encourage local suppliers of fireworks to stock quieter fireworks for public displays. It is noted that resolution three of the substantive motion has been actioned and made available to members. It is also noted that in twenty twenty, no organised public firework displays took place in the borough due to COVID restrictions, which means resolution one could not be actioned in twenty twenty. However, resolutions two and four are equally related to private displays and sales of fireworks, which did take place in twenty twenty. Can I ask councillor Gibson, the lead member for area management and community safety, or his representative, to update members and the public today on resolutions one, two and four and how they were actioned or will be actioned as we approach November the fifth this year in relation to the resolutions of January twenty twenty? That would have been what I had to say, but could I ask a question to the monitoring officer on process?
Can I just, can I just say councillor Thompson, we can't give you a verbal answer this evening because as you're aware councillor Gibson has put his apologies in. Therefore, a written response will be given to you within seven working days.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was the reason I was going to ask a question to the monitoring officer.
No, you will get, you will get a written response from the lead member.
No, I understand, but I, I wanted to ask a question to the monitoring officer on process here because of councillor Gibson.
I'm sorry councillor Thompson, that isn't appropriate. If you want to contact the monitoring officer, you contact her not inside this meeting, outside the meeting. If it's a short question.
It's a very short question, just on process. I just wanted to know if there was an option because I felt the public would like to hear the lead members report on that or answer to that. Would, would this be possible to be pushed on to the next full council? As opposed to a written answer?
Can I just say councillor Thompson, the responses, responses will be circulated to every elected member.
Yeah, I was talking about the public.
Well, you can let anybody know if they're circulated to you.
I haven't been, the question wasn't answered. I was asking if there was a process, if there was an option to push this to next council so we could hear the lead members' response.
No, there isn't. There isn't a process because it can't be repeated within six month period. Okay? But you will receive an answer from the lead member in writing within seven days. Okay?
Thank you.
We move on to item eleven. The next item of business is to deal with petitions received. Under the council's procedure rule nine, one petition has been received under this rule. I will explain the procedure to follow for the petition. As per the council procedure rules, we will not debate the petition today. After the petition has been presented, in accordance with the process set out in the constitution, I will move that the petition be referred to the appropriate body. Petition one, residents of Mill Lane area at Whitburn objected to the removal and repositioning of the bus stop and the erection of traffic lights at Mill Lane, Whitburn. The petition has a total of fourteen signatories and all fourteen are from within the borough. In accordance with standing orders, I propose that the petition stands referred to the head of Infrastructure and Transport as the appropriate officer for further consideration. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. In accordance with the council's procedure rule nine point fourteen, the head of Corporate and External Affairs has provided an update on the action taken in respect of petitions received by the council at its meetings on the twenty-fourth of June twenty twenty-one. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the update report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, this report provides an update on the action that has been taken in respect of petitions received by full council at its meeting on the twenty-fourth of June twenty twenty-one, as per the requirement of council procedure rule nine point one four. Madam Mayor, I move the report and ask colleagues to note the content of the report for information, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the report, sorry, is the report noted?
Noted.
Thank you. We move to item twelve on the agenda. The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule ten. Four motions are to be considered under this rule today. I will explain the procedure for the motion. I will ask the proposer of each motion to move the motion and he or she may speak for up to five minutes. I will, I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconded may speak for up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members, who may each speak for up to three minutes and may move amendments. Motion one has been submitted by councillors Huntley, Welsh, Potts, Melling and Amor. Councillor Huntley, please present the motion to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Across the country each year, a range of animals are given away each year in unsuitable plastic bags at fairgrounds and fates. Many of these are won by children and parents who are totally unprepared to take on a pet simply because they've won a game at a fair. The practice of giving away pets as prizes, particularly goldfish, has gone on long and may bring enjoyment to some. Acquiring an animal to be kept as a pet should be the result of careful planning and prior consideration. Additionally, action on this matter may also deter people from awarding other prizes, pets as prizes, protecting our popular pets such as dogs. Pets as prizes is often a no-win situation for animals and their potential new owners. This council is concerned that a number of cases have been reported to the RSPCA each year regarding pets being given as prizes via fairgrounds, social media and other channels in England. And notes the use predominantly concerns goldfish. It is concerned for the welfare of these animals that are being given as prizes. Recognises that many cases of pets being given as prizes may go unreported each year. This council supports a move to ban the giving of live animals as prizes in any form on South Tyneside's council land. I am asking that the council agrees to ban outright giving of live animals as prizes in any form on South Tyneside council land. Ask the leader of the council to write to the UK government urging an outright ban on giving of live animals as prizes on both public and private lands. Ask the leader of the council to write to the borough's two MPs, asking that they call for an outright ban on giving of live animals as prizes on both public and private lands and raise this with the appropriate government minister. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Huntley. Is the motion seconded? Councillor Welsh?
Yes, it is, Madam Mayor. I've been looking into this and I came up with some horrendous information because in the wild, goldfish can be found in slow-moving freshwater bodies of water. In the wild, they have a lifespan of about ten to fifteen years, in some times up to twenty-four years. Unfortunately, they don't live that long in captivity. If they're lucky, they live about one year. Putting them in a plastic bag in tap water is deadly to a goldfish. They suffocate if they are kept in a small area like a bowl or a bag as they breathe in their own waste and if it's not cleaned regularly. They need to move freely and need space to do this. Keeping them in a filtered tank can extend their lifespan only if cleaned regularly, at least twice a week. Tap water is lethal and it's usually too cold as a temperature of seventy degrees is ideal. So I'm asking that we please support this motion to help these beautiful creatures to live in the wild where they should live.
Thank you councillor Welsh. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask questions, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Bristol?
Thank you and thank you to the members for bringing this to council. I'd just like to add a small, hopefully non-controversial amendment to the motion, asking the leader of the council to write to venues and organisers of events in South Tyneside whom we operate on private land and who offer live animals as prizes and urging them to refrain from doing so. I appreciate the council doesn't have the authority to impose bans on private land, but we can at very least encourage and appeal to the better nature of owners and organisers of fairgrounds and fates and so on to stop giving live animals as prizes, excuse me, to stop giving live animals as prizes. Yeah, so, yeah, just that one point I'd like to add to the motion as it is.
Councillor Huntley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whilst understanding where you're coming from, unfortunately, you answered your own question and you said we have no jurisdiction over this. It would be nigh on impossible to find every private owner. I think what we need to do is hold the motion as it is. That is what we have the jurisdiction as this council and I suggest that we vote on this motion, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Is the amendment to the motion that councillor Bristol has put forward seconded? Yes, councillor Roberts?
Yeah, I was going to second the amendment if that's acceptable.
Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to second councillor Bristol's amendment. I fully welcome the original motion coming to council and would encourage members to support it here tonight, whether amended or not. It's already an offence in England and Wales. It's already an offence in England and Wales to give animals away as prizes to anyone under the age of sixteen unless they're accompanied by an adult, and in Scotland it's an offence in almost all circumstances to give an animal away as a prize to anyone, regardless of age. And we need to be taking a firm stand on this outdated practice. To quote Evangeline Button from the RSPCA's Wildlife Department, "Animal ownership is a big responsibility and shouldn't be a spur of the moment result of winning a game. To those playing, if you win, the animals lose", end quote. I think the amendment seeks to strengthen the motion, widening its scope whilst recognising limits on what we're actually directly able to influence. But I would just come back to councillor Huntley there and point out that, as we've already heard tonight, there was a motion a couple of years ago with regard to fireworks, and the scope of that was limited to firework displays held on council land. But the motion also gave provision for events held off private land, and whilst we can't directly control what happens on private land, we can still take a lead and, you know, appeal to people to do the right thing. So I know we can't police it and enforce it, but I certainly think we can request it. And I don't think that's enough of a reason, you know, the fact that people have the freedom to say no, I don't think that's enough of a reason to not ask them to do the right thing in the first place.
Is the amendment to the original motion agreed? This will result in the amended motion taking the place of the original motion and becoming the substantive motion?
Agreed.
We will have to take a vote.
That's right, Madam Mayor. You'll have to take the vote on the amendment first. If the amendment loses, then the original motion stands.
Yes, I've got it in front of me, councillor Malcolm, I'm aware of that. Thank you. Councillor Hamilton?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I did have my hand up to speak before you went to ask whether the motion, the amendment was accepted or not. I didn't intend to speak on this motion at all. However...
I'm sorry, councillor Hamilton, we need to take a vote on this motion.
Sorry, I did have my hand up to speak.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see.
In advance.
You'll have the opportunity to speak after we've taken.
It's on the amendment that I wanted to speak, though.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. While recognizing what councillor Huntley said, many events that are operated on private land do have to come into the council for permission to operate those events. And as such, I think it would be perfectly within our remit to write to the organisers or even just have something that we issue when they ask for licensing or for a licence to hold an event, or if they ask for road closures or anything like that, just to encourage them not to to offer live animals as prizes. I think we're missing a trick if we don't include it. It's not saying we will have to write to every venue and organiser. It's the ones we know about. If we know about an event or an organisation that's going on, it's not too difficult just to issue a standard letter, encouraging them not to to offer live animals as prizes, or to refer them to a page on the website, which states that the council doesn't promote offering live animals as prizes. And I just think it does strengthen the motion, so I think we should support that amendment.
Thank you. We're going to take a vote on that. Can I ask the monitoring officer to carry out a named vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Why are we having a named vote?
So elected members.
Madam Mayor, why are we having a named vote, and who are the people who are backing the named vote?
Councillor McCabe, I was going to suggest a vote by hands, we're not doing a named vote first, yeah? So this vote, which will do by conducting show of hands, is about whether or not the amendment to the original motion is agreed. So if I can have a raise of hands for everybody, four.
Could I request a named vote, please?
You'll need five members altogether to be able to have a named vote on this. Right, I'll read out everybody's name in alphabetical order, and if you can ask that, you just please turn on your microphone and confirm whether you're for, against or abstaining from the vote. And elected members, remember this is just as to whether or not the amendment is going to be included in the motion. Councillor Amor?
Against.
Councillor Atkinson?
Against.
Against.
Councillor Barclay?
Against.
Councillor Best?
Against.
Councillor Bristol?
For.
Councillor Dean?
Against.
Councillor Dick, sorry, councillor Dix?
Against.
Councillor Dixon?
Against.
Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Duncan? Councillor Ellison?
Against.
Councillor Flynn?
Against.
Councillor Forman? Councillor Foster?
For.
Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Hamilton?
For.
Councillor Hay?
Against.
Councillor Hetherington?
Against.
Councillor Huntley?
Against.
Councillor Keegan?
Against.
Councillor Kennedy?
For.
Councillor Kilgaw?
Against.
Councillor Lisk?
Against.
Councillor Malcolm? Councillor N E Maxwell?
Against.
Councillor McCabe?
Against.
Councillor McHugh?
Against.
Councillor Melling? Councillor Milburn?
For.
Councillor Peacock?
Against.
Councillor Porthouse?
Against.
Councillor Potts?
Against.
Councillor Proudlock?
Against.
Councillor Purvis?
Against.
Councillor Roberts?
All.
Councillor Smith?
Against.
Councillor Strike?
Against.
Councillor Taylor?
Against.
Councillor Thompson?
For.
Councillor Trina?
Against.
Councillor M Walsh?
Against.
Councillor Welsh? And councillor West? So, Madam Mayor, we have thirty-six members voting against, and we have eight members voting for. Is that correct? Everybody happy? Yeah?
Thank you for that. Do any of the members wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment to the original proposal? Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I do want to start with this motion. I've got dogs, and I've got cats in the house, and they're very, very well looked after. But the problem I've got here is, for somebody to bring a motion about goldfish, which I do think should be looked after, when we've got such a priority of antisocial behaviour in the area, why isn't she bringing something about antisocial behaviour? The housing fraud that's going on in this area, and this is all what depend on a goldfish. That is the end of it, a goldfish, when we've got more, a lot more important things going on in here. We've got residents who are getting persecuted every day, getting victimised. Antisocial behaviour through the roof, never been addressed since two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and sixteen since this has been addressed. We've got housing fraud that's went through the roof, and it's very, very well known. And there's a lot of people in here know that housing fraud's been going on. So even though I've agreed with the councillor Francis and his other councillor, I think this motion is an absolute disgrace to be brought here, when we've got people out there suffering on a daily basis. And I also think that, when you look at this, and it goes on about the Showmans Guild, I think that's an embarrassment to even mention the Showmans Guild, or the fairground people, as it's put. Because I think the biggest attraction that's in this borough is the South Tyneside, is the fairground. And to condemn them, people who've worked there for years and years and years, is a disgrace. And I cannot remember the last time I seen a goldfish down there. And one thing I haven't seen down there is a dog. A dog being given away as a prize. I think the member wants to realise them dogs that are getting given away are little cuddly toys that are hanging up. They're not real dogs. They're cuddly toys, honestly. I've seen them. So even though I've agreed with David Francis and their motion, I think this motion is an absolute disgrace to the people around here. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Roberts. Councillor Huntley is the mover of the original motion. You have the right of reply at the close of the debate. Do you wish to reply to the debate?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to thank all of my colleagues for listening. If anybody thinks that animal welfare isn't priority for this council, then I'm very sorry, it absolutely is. And please don't try and make this out to be about a goldfish against a dog. It is not. It is about all animals that may or may not be given as prizes, so please read it correctly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Do we need to take a vote now? No. The motion is agreed. Thank you. Motion two has been submitted by councillors Porthouse, McCabe, Barclay, Best, Amor and Atkinson. Councillor Porthouse, please present the motion to full council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This council believes that South Tyneside is stronger because of its diverse communities. We believe that the borough benefits from residents with different ethnicities and nationalities. We welcome the positive contributions of all residents, regardless of background or life in South Tyneside. This council believes that acceptance and the celebration of diversity are the hallmarks of modern society, and that no one should be forced into conformity. We therefore express concern that the significant increase of racist acts and hate crime reported more and more recently. Racism, xenophobia and hate crime of any nature have no place in our society. South Tyneside council condemns racism, xenophobia and hate crimes unequivocally. South Tyneside council has resolved to, one, take positive action to promote diversity and acceptance, including information on reporting hate crime in council news and on the council website. Two, challenge acts of racism and hate crime where we are aware of it. Three, ask each elected member to make a pledge to challenge racism and hate crime where they see it, by stating that we show racism the red card. And four, ensure that all elected members and senior officers are given appropriate equality training. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Porthouse. Is the motion seconded?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's seconded by myself, and I'll reserve the right to speak later in the debate. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is now open to debate by members. Does any member wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, the motion focuses on racism and hate crime, and I fully welcome the resolutions contained in it. But I would like to propose what I consider to be a friendly amendment, adding one specific action in relation to the elected member pledge mentioned in the original motion. So what I'm proposing is to insert an additional resolution after the third resolution of the original motion, which would read as follows. South Tyneside council pledges to pledge our support for show racism the red cards, wear red day, which is twenty-second of October, twenty twenty-one, at the Borough Council meeting on Thursday, twenty-first of October, and illuminate South Shields Town Hall in red during the week of red, week of wear red week, sorry, during the week of wear red day, twenty twenty-one. That's the end of the amendment. So if I can speak on the amendment now. I'd like to thank those involved in drafting the original motion and bringing it to full council tonight. Sadly, these are issues that still persist in society and in our borough. We still see racism and hate crime in our society and in our communities, and we have a responsibility to challenge this behaviour and work to eliminate it. In June's full council meeting, we heard that between April, twenty twenty and March, twenty twenty-one, there were two hundred and eighty-seven hate crimes recorded by Northumbria Police across South Tyneside. We know that the true figure is likely to be considerably higher, as much of this type of crime goes unreported. We also know that the figures show annual rises within certain protected characteristics. Race, homophobia and faith continuing to be the most reported categories of hate crime locally. As a ward councillor, I'm also aware of issues involving transphobic hate crime, misogynistic hate crime and hate crime relating to disability. The original motion uses the phrase "show racism the red card", and I know many here tonight will be aware of the charity of that name and the important work they do, particularly with regard to our children and young people. And that charity, I know, is very grateful for the support it continues to receive from our local authority. And I'm aware that councillor Ellison has been a key figure in continuing that support, and I would like to thank him and council staff for their work on this. Part of show racism the red cards work is the annual wear red day event, and the timing of our next council meeting gives us a great opportunity to take action on the pledge mentioned in resolution three of the original motion. Last week, I spoke with the charity's chief executive, Jed Greby, and asked if there was anything specific we could do as a council to mark wear red day, and this amendment is based on that conversation. The charity is happy to provide us with some physical resources and potentially arrange for some sporting celebrity guests to make this pledge with us and help arrange a photo shoot, if that's acceptable, either before or after the next full council meeting. They also ask us to repeat what we've done in previous years with public buildings being lit up in red. These might seem like trivial things, but along with the other resolutions, these steps should help to raise public awareness, make our position clear and help support an organisation dedicated to tackling the root causes of these issues. In closing, I'd just like to remind people of the Angela Davis quote, "In a racist society, it's not enough to be non-racist, we must be anti-racist", end quote. Let's take a firm and public stance on this as a local authority. Please vote for the amendment tonight, vote for the amended motion and do our bit to show racism the red card.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Is the amendment to the motion seconded? Councillor Bristol? Do you wish to speak? No. Is the amendment to the original motion agreed? This will... Thank you. This will result in the amended motion taking the place of the original motion and becoming the substantive motion?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but that's incorrect. That's the incorrect procedure. I really am sorry. The amendment has to go to the body of the hall. Whether or not the body of the hall agrees to the amendment.
That's what I've just asked.
You haven't. You haven't. You've asked if the amendment is agreed. It needs to be taken to a vote. Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
It could have been done by assent, councillor Malcolm, or it goes to the vote. I have all, I'm being advised by our legal department, councillor Malcolm.
So what are you saying?
I'm going to ask the monitoring officer to explain it to you.
You don't have to explain it to me. I'm telling you what the procedure is.
Well, just for the benefit, councillor Malcolm, excuse me, don't talk over me. Just for the benefit for the rest of the elected members present, I'm going to ask the monitoring officer to go over it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the mayor asked if the amendment to the motion was seconded. It was. And therefore she then asked if the amendment to the original motion was agreed. So as per other reports, if the room had just agreed by assent, there wouldn't be a need to conduct a vote by way of show of hands or named vote. If there was a dissenting voice in that, then there would be a need to do a vote. So that was just the first point, and whether or not there is actually a need to do a raised hand or named vote. If there is a dissenting voice, then we can, we'll do a vote.
Is everybody happy with that answer? Councillor Atkinson?
I just want clarification. I would have liked to have made some comments to this, but I might not be given the opportunity, Madam Mayor.
Yes, later on, yeah. Yes, I think we need to have a vote on this.
In that case, could I request a named vote, please?
Have you got five people to back you, councillor Francis? Thank you, gentlemen. And then to vote Nicola.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So elected members will first attempt to do a vote on whether or not the amendment is accepted and will become the substantive motion on which further discussion and debate can take place by a way of show of hands. So may I ask all members who are for the inclusion of the amendment to the motion to raise their hand?
Sorry, you're not doing a recorded vote here?
Oh, sorry, named vote, sorry. Right, I'll read it out alphabetically. Councillor Amor?
Against.
Councillor Atkinson?
Against.
Councillor Bell?
Against.
Councillor Barclay?
Against.
Councillor Best?
Against.
Councillor Bristow?
For.
Councillor Dean? Councillor Dix?
Against.
Councillor Dixon?
Against.
Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Duncan? Councillor Ellison?
Against.
Councillor Flynn?
Against.
Councillor Foreman? Councillor Forster?
For.
Councillor Francis?
This is simply because of who's suggesting it, isn't it? But I'm going to say for.
Councillor Hamilton?
For.
Councillor Hay?
Against.
Councillor Hetherington? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy?
For.
Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Lisk?
Against.
Councillor Malcolm? Councillor Eni Maxwell?
Against.
Councillor McCabe?
Against.
Councillor McHugh?
Against.
Councillor Melling?
Against.
Councillor Milburn?
For.
Councillor Peacock?
Against.
Councillor Portouse?
Against.
Councillor Potts?
Against.
Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis?
Against.
Councillor Roberts? Councillor Smith? Councillor Strike?
Against.
Against.
Councillor Thompson?
For.
Councillor Traynor?
Against.
Councillor Walsh? M Walsh, sorry. Councillor Welsh?
Against.
And councillor West? So that's four, sorry, eight votes for the inclusion of the amendment and 36 votes against. So we'll revert to the original motion. Madam May.
Councillor Portouse is the mover of the original motion. You have the right to reply to close the debate. But I'm aware that councillor McCabe has a secondary reserved the right before and he wishes to speak now.
Okay, thanks for that, Madam May. Significant, isn't it, that something that we should be all agreeing on is a little bit dissension? A little bit political play there, you know, to try and change something which really does need changing. Very, very disappointed in councillor Francis. Extremely disappointed.
By trying to strengthen the motion, that's dissension. That's disgraceful.
Quite. I didn't interrupt councillor Thompson, but he's shown his bad manners.
If you wish to speak, councillor Thompson, you speak through me as the chair of this meeting.
Apologies, Madam May.
Thank you very much. Continue councillor McCabe.
Thanks very much, Madam May. Like I said, I didn't interrupt councillor Thompson several times he's spoken. And this is the problem about respect. And this is the whole problem with racism. There is no respect in racism. Racism equals, in my book, hatred. And it's not to be tolerated. Now, South Tyneside Council have a fabulous record for the newer members who may not know this, but me personally, as an elected member, I'm going back and I've asked councillor Dean because he's very good with the history of Sillan Football Club. But I represented South Tyneside Council at Sillan Football Club where we showed Racism the Red Card charity and donated a huge amount of money from South Tyneside Council to that charity. And that's seven or eight years ago, I think. We have a true record of, you know, equality and diversity in the borough. We help communities through things like App Naga, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, there's nobody can come to us and say that we don't try. We may not always get it right. And I'm sure that, you know, we will light up the town hall and do the things there. But, you know, I don't like this politicisation of an amendment where we should all be in agreement. Racism has got no part in a modern society, civilised society. And yet the one that for me is paramount is 2.2. Challenge acts of racism and hate crime where we are aware of it. I didn't know what race crime was. I was a young boy in a monastery in Scotland. And the brothers I was with, the Maris brothers are a teaching order and teach all through the world. And in 1967, there was something happening in Africa in a place called Biafra, where the brothers were teaching in schools in places like Enugu. And when I looked at that as a young, young, young boy, I didn't understand why black people were killing black people. And if you look at Nigeria today, you still have the same hatred and the same racism between the Hausa who rule the country and the Igbo. There are another tribe that live there, the Iyiruba. But the hatred is there. You have places like Sudan, where the war has been continuing for something like 40 years, where black people are killing black people. You go to China and the Chinese government, communist government, are killing people who are Muslims because of their faith. It's something that we as a council cannot change. But I'm delighted to support councillor Portouse in this, in this motion. Because we do believe in diversity. We are stronger if we all work together and show each other respect. Because if you don't do that, and I think many people in here will have been there, southern Poland, the consequences of not working together and not showing respect are you end up with places like Auschwitz-Burgenau. Now, I fully support this motion councillor Portouse and it may be a small step, but it's a step in the right direction and every journey starts with a small step. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McCabe. Councillor Atkinson, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam May. It was just to point out that, as has been highlighted, we do have a very strong connection with the organisation Show Racism the Red Card. As councillor Ellison knows, as councillor Moira Smith knows and many other members who've served with the Children's Portfolio, as I have myself. And actually, a lot of this will already be in place and this is why I was a little bit frustrated to see it. Because there was no mention whether the check had been done, what was in place already. So for instance, lighting up, illuminating the town hall, it may already be in place for a different day or on the day. So this is why I think it's fine to do some research beyond and to the organisations themselves, but we also have to check out with our offices as to whether things are feasible, whether they can be delivered. Going back to the fireworks motion which was passed, as we've alluded to, you know, last year, the year before, I can't remember when it was, but in any case, the amendment was flawed to it. So it's about checking out whether these things can be delivered in the town hall that we're asking for, or actually are they already in place? That's my, that was my frustration. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Atkinson. Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam May. I wanted to speak in support of this motion because I think it's a very, very important motion. During the anti-racism protests last year, my daughter-in-law wrote about an incident that involved my grandson on social media. She said when Ruben, that's my grandson, was about five or six, a child in his class said to him, she could never be his girlfriend because he was brown. As he was telling me the story, this is my daughter-in-law's words, he began to cry and I swear to God I've never been more upset in my life. His beyond enviable olive-toned skin is from his dad's side and I believe it was summer at the time. But this really affected him and we had many a conversation about it as he just couldn't understand why that would matter. Roll on five years and this kid can't remember what he did last week. But when we were talking about the protests today, he brought up the incident again and he told me he's thought about it a few times and remember where he was and what he was doing when it happened and it clearly really affected him. We obviously had another chat. She says, we then went on, she then went on to say, but imagine that being your everyday. Imagine knowing your child will go through this and probably not be shocked when they do. I can't even begin to imagine how I would handle it. Madam May, an adult must have told that little girl what to say because children aren't born racist. And yet racism is all around us. Just this weekend, my dear friend Habib Brahman, the Lord Mayor of Newcastle, was racially abused and attacked outside of the mosque. He had fireworks thrown at him and he was frightened. His father had been stabbed to death by, this is all common knowledge in the newspapers today, had been stabbed to death just 10 days after he'd arrived in Tynan Way. And Habib had thought that there was a lot more tolerance now in society and there is. But he was scared because racism is still all around us. It isn't always intended, but it is always hurtful. We probably all know that saying send them back where they come from is racist. But some people don't, still don't see that just asking a black person where they really came from when they've already said they're from Newcastle or Manchester is just as wrong and just as racist. The lack of diversity in this room and I count myself in that is quite astounding. As a council and as elected members and as political parties, we need to do more to encourage people from different backgrounds to get involved, to be represented and to stand for elective office. Not perpetuate the problem by excluding and isolating people or even worse, ignoring racism when we see it. I support this motion, but that isn't enough. I pledged my support to show racism the red card years ago, but I know that I can do more. We need to stop ignoring casual racism. Stop saying that racism can be dealt with informally and take a real stand. Today, I am calling out racism. Today, I have submitted a complaint under the council's code of conduct requesting a formal investigation about racism. Because I can no longer stand by as racism is brushed under the carpet. Racism is a curse on our society and all of us must, we must be the antidote to that curse. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Councillor Best?
Thank you, Madam May. It was really some of the things have already been mentioned that I would like to have said. Just to clarify as well, councillor Atkinson mentioned that we do have history of delivering some of these actions already, including the Wear Red Day. I know that we've previously pledged to support that and have done that. So hopefully we can go forward and continue doing so. I'm very happy to be a signatory to this important motion. And just really, I wanted to say that hate is a learned behaviour and anything that we can do as community leaders to lead by example, by our behaviours and our conduct is really the most important thing we can do as elected members. So just really hope that members are able to commit to the motion. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Best. Councillor Barclay?
Thank you, Madam May. Can I thank councillor Portouse for bringing this motion to council? It's a subject that is very dear to my heart and something that I've fought all my life against. As a resident of South Tyneside, I am proud to be part of a multicultural community which adds richness and diversity to the borough. All my life, I have campaigned against racism and intolerance and have sought to break down barriers through education and celebrating diversity. As a full-time officer with Unison, I worked with our black members to highlight their lived experiences of racism at work and in their communities. I am proud that Unison supported Show Racism the Red Card and the phenomenal work that they do in schools to educate the next generation to be equipped to challenge racism and value everyone irrespective of their ethnicity. Sadly, as has been evidenced throughout this summer, racism is still a reality today. There are still those for whom racism is a regular occurrence. The impact on individuals and families is devastating in both their physical and mental health as they live with the fear of hatred. No one should have to endure this. We all have a responsibility to challenge racism wherever we come across it. We are all different. That's what embraces us and that's what we should value and respect and be proud of. I am pleased to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barclay. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam May. Madam May, as we're talking about racism, and I'm fully backed 100% Show Racism the Red Card, I'm a football supporter and I go to the matches. And yes, you do hear little bits and pieces all the time. But for anybody to talk about racism as a Labour councillor or a Labour MP or anything to do with Labour, when we've had antisemitism going on for years.
I'm sorry, that's certainly a debate in this council chamber tonight, councillor Roberts.
Okay, Madam May. Coming back with, councillor Portouse read out here, we welcome the positive contributions of all residents regardless of the background to their life in South Tyneside. I think this gentleman forgot, a few years ago, when he was working in the shipyards, he persecuted Polish immigrants.
I'm sorry councillor Roberts. We're talking about...
Madam May, this has got something to do with it. How can he sit here and be hypocrites and talk about racism and he has committed it?
I'm sorry councillor Roberts, you're acting offensively.
Sorry?
You are acting offensively.
What, for just telling the truth?
No.
It's down there in black and white, Madam May. It is down there in black and white that he verbally abused people until he was made charge hand and then put porter cabins on the dockside for a living.
Councillor Roberts, you are acting offensively.
How can I be acting offensively when I'm talking the truth, Madam May?
No, it's by what you're saying and you're becoming personal with another councillor, by your remarks.
Is it not the truth though?
No, it isn't acute.
It is the truth, Madam May.
I'm sorry.
Madam May, yet again, you're shutting the truth down when people are talking the truth. To come back to councillor McCabe, when he was talking about that this has got a great... This is a great area for racism. This council shows great respect for racism. Yet we've got councillor Dick who abused a coloured man when he got off a bus. Charged for it.
Right, I'm sorry. You are out of the order.
Madam May, Madam May.
I'm sorry councillor Dick, just one moment.
No, Madam May, he's made an accusation against me.
The truth.
If you go back, let me explain.
I'm sorry, can you be quiet for one moment?
And I want him to retract that remark. I was never, ever charged with anything.
Yeah. Right, when I'm speaking, it was made perfectly clear at the beginning of the meeting. Nobody would talk over me. Now, I've tried to explain to you, councillor Roberts, you were being offensive to another member in this chamber. You will be no further heard on this discussion at the moment and I will have no more comments about it. Is that seconded? Thank you. Is there any other member that wishes to speak? Thank you councillor Flynn.
Yeah, I appreciate all the arguments that's been made regards racism. On a personal note, when I was involved in UCAT and we were recruiting Polish workers to the trade union movement, I did work with councillor Portouse at the time to get contact links. But the comment I would make on the resolution, it's a minor thing in a way, but we all have it in our gift to attend the customs house when the festival of lights on with the ethnic communities. So I'd like to say is there... I would have asked a question if I'd been able to speak earlier on the amendment and I appreciate it's gone. But the only red thing I've got is a tie or a jumper with Vote Labour on. I don't know if that would be acceptable in the chamber.
Thank you councillor Flynn for that. Councillor Francis, you've already spoken on this matter.
I've spoken on the amendment.
Yes, can we just say...
But not the motion.
Right, okay.
I'm going to repeat some of what I said because I think it, some people didn't hear it for some reason, but I've already said that I think this council has a fantastic record in relation to work that they've done to tackle racism. I gave... I gave tribute to the work that's been done to support Show Racism the Red Card. I said already, and I'll quote exactly what I said, I fully welcome the resolutions in this motion and I would like to thank those involved in drafting the original motion. And I gave tribute to the councillors and staff involved in supporting that charity. And it's disappointing that that was misrepresented here tonight, but despite that, I absolutely support the motion and the resolutions contained in it. And I hope we can be unanimous in our support of the original motion.
Thank you councillor Francis. Councillor Porthouse, as the mover of the original motion, you have the right to reply at the close of this debate. Do you wish to reply to the debate councillor Porthouse?
Madam Mayor, I'm into kicking it out.
Thank you. Is the motion agreed? Colleagues, you've been asked, oh, sorry, next one. We're on to motion three. Motion three has been submitted by councillors Thompson, Kennedy, Roberts, P Bilburn and Bristow. Councillor Thompson, please present the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a local authority, we have a responsibility to be as open and transparent as is reasonably practicable. This encourages greater public accessibility and participation in local authority activities. Currently, in South Tyneside council, when a resolution is passed in council, both members and the public have limited opportunity to see how resolutions are actioned. Accessibility to agreed council resolutions for both residents and members is crucial to openness, transparency and accountability. We need to ensure that both residents and members have visibility of how council resolutions are actioned. This motion moves to establish a process where agreed council resolutions are updated to the motions book in the members' room, showing how all resolutions have or the detail of when they will be actioned. And to establish that the South Tyneside council website displays agreed council resolutions showing how all resolutions or the detail of when they will be actioned. Thank you.
Is the motion seconded? Councillor Kennedy, seconded. Councillor Kennedy, would you like to speak? You have up to three minutes.
I'll reserve the right to speak later.
The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to move an amendment to the motion. In the section, I'll read out the amendment and then I will speak to that amendment. In the section, this council notes add a new point four that reads, the benefits of increased civil and democratic participation include better governance and decision-making, improved service delivery and more cohesive communities. Effective consultation, engagement and involvement is vital to improving public participation in civil and democratic society. In the section, this council resolves add a new point three that reads, to work with the public and community groups and organisations to develop a new consultation, engagement and involvement strategy that increases public participation in the council's decision-making processes and raises awareness of opportunities for public participation in civil and democratic activities. And that the draft strategy is presented to all community area forums for comment before being brought to a borough council meeting in January 20, sorry, February 2022 for approval. That is the end of the amendment. I will now speak to the amendment. Madam Mayor, in 2018, I was privileged to be elected to represent the residents of the ward where I grew up. I was determined to be a good councillor and I spent time checking best practice, reading the code of conduct and getting a grip with Nolan's seven principles of public life, the rules that every councillor must follow. Selflessness, integrity, objectivity are about acting in the public interest while accountability, openness and honesty are key to any democratic society. And finally, leadership, which Nolan says means willing to challenge poor behaviour wherever it occurs. I've done my best to follow these principles ever since, even if it doesn't make me popular. When I acted in the public interest and supported a motion to declare a climate emergency, the Labour group whip was suspended. When I voted for increased openness, more sanctions were imposed. And when I was honest with residents about changes to funding, the Labour group took action to stop me standing as a councillor next year. Then there's leadership. My dad and elder sister were killed in a car crash before I was born, but apparently leadership means forgetting my principles to go out and campaign for a convicted drug driver to become a councillor. I predict this amendment and motion will be voted down because increased transparency isn't popular in the Labour group. I hope I'm wrong, but I doubt it. Two weeks after I was elected, a colleague compared me in derogatory terms to a dead councillor. Officers have told me they aren't allowed to help me and I've been refused access to information I need to support residents. I've seen funding withdrawn from well-respected organisations that support vulnerable people without...
Point of order, Madam Mayor, point of order.
Well said.
Has this...
This is not an amendment to the...
This is speaking to the amendment. And before you stop me speaking, Madam Mayor, I suggest you might want to take account of the fact that a pre-recording of this speech is ready to go live on social media and has already been sent to the press, so you may want to hear what I have to say. I've been refused to access to information I need to support my residents. I've seen funding withdrawn from well-respected organisations that support vulnerable people without any consideration for the consequences. And I've struggled to get support for a young resident who attempted to take their own lives after losing all trust in the council. I've watched as those with connections in right places have been allowed to close public footpaths and as council resources have been used to support candidates in elections. I hope that things would be different after the resignation of the previous leader. I held out a hand of friendship to the current leader, but nothing has changed.
I'm sorry, point of order councillor Hamilton, I have to stop you there.
It will be published on social media.
That's fine councillor Hamilton.
I think you want to hear the end of this, the Labour group.
I'm sorry, no, we don't want to hear the end of it.
Today, I am resigning from South Tyneside Labour Group. Not the Labour Party, just the Labour Group. I have no doubt that the Labour Group will ask for me to be expelled and the NEC will decide what action to take. Until then, I continue to be the Labour councillor who puts her residents first and I'll ask those same residents to decide if they want me to stand again for election. Please support this amendment and motion, but I don't think you will because it came from the wrong people. Thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Hamilton. Is the amendment to the motion seconded? Councillor Thompson, seconded. Is the amendment to the original motion agreed?
Agreed.
This will result in, is there any dissent? We need to take a vote on the amendment to the motion. Councillor Francis?
Sorry, the amendment hasn't been debated yet.
It's been moved, councillor. You can make comments after the vote, but it's been moved.
Surely you debate it before you make the vote?
You can, could I just ask the monitoring officer to explain this to you councillor,
Sorry, the amendment was moved and seconded, so therefore a vote needs to follow as to whether the amendment on the motion is agreed or not. All members will have an opportunity to make a point, debate, discuss, pose another question or another amendment after it's been agreed, whether or not the amendment is to stand or not.
Is that what happened with the previous motions?
Yes.
Okay.
So as there was a dissenting voice, Madam Mayor, I know you've asked for that. So I think if we can do that by a show of hands. I'd like to call for a named vote.
Do we have another four people to back? Okay, welcome. Come on, it's a named vote then, please.
So this is a named vote, elected members, on whether or not the amendment as in front of you is to be accepted.
Sorry, point of order. Rules of procedure 12.5.1 states that a councillor can speak once on an amendment moved by another elected member.
It was seconded and moved to a vote before, I think your hat was up. It's entirely up to you, Madam Mayor, you can take the point.
I think we need to move to the vote councillor Francis.
So this is to vote as to whether or not you want to accept the amendment so that this becomes the substantive motion or not. Councillor Omar?
Against.
Councillor Atkinson?
Against.
Councillor Bell?
Against.
Councillor Barclay?
Against.
Councillor Best?
Against.
Councillor Bristow?
Four.
Councillor Dean?
Against.
Councillor Dix?
Against.
Councillor Dixon?
Against.
Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Duncan? Councillor Ellison?
Against.
Councillor Flynn?
Against.
Councillor Foreman? Councillor Foster?
Four.
Councillor Francis?
Four.
Councillor Hamilton?
Four.
Councillor Hay?
Against.
Councillor Hetherington?
Against.
Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan?
Against.
Councillor Kennedy?
Four.
Councillor Kilgaw?
Against.
Councillor Lisk?
Against.
Councillor Malcolm? Councillor Eni Maxwell?
Against.
Councillor McCabe?
Against.
Councillor McHugh?
Against.
Councillor Melling?
Against.
Councillor Milburn?
Four.
Councillor Peacock?
Against.
Councillor Porthouse?
Against.
Councillor Potts?
Against.
Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis?
Against.
Councillor Roberts? Councillor Smith?
Against.
Councillor Strike?
Against.
Councillor Taylor?
Against.
Councillor Thompson?
Four.
Councillor Traynor?
Against.
Councillor M Walsh?
Against.
Councillor Welsh?
Against.
Councillor West? Madam Mayor, again, that's a vote that we have eight people for the amendment to the motion and 36 against.
So therefore, the original motion is agreed. Thank you.
Sorry, don't we have to debate the original motion now? I mean, there's been no debate on this at all at any stage.
I was just about to open up to debate councillor Francis. Does any member now wish to make a comment? Thank you councillor Francis.
Thank you. Yeah, I've been really pleased to see some positive changes in the last year or so in the way our decisions are recorded and made accessible to the public. It's been very positive to see written records of action taken in response to petitions to full council and written answers to questions from full council, all made clearly and easily accessible to residents in the meeting papers. And I'm happy for those positive quotes to be quoted on other parties' electoral Facebook accounts if they wish to do so. I'm aware that some motions to full council already contain resolutions that commit us to reporting on progress. So for example, the climate emergency motion had that built into the resolutions. But it seems logical to extend this so that a brief summary of action taken following a particular motion is easily accessible to elected members and public alike. I can see no good reason not to support this and would encourage colleagues to vote for the motion.
Thank you councillor Francis. Councillor Thompson, as the mover of the original motion, you have the right to reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think all I could add...
Sorry, there was another member wanting to speak. I'm really sorry councillor Thompson. Councillor Best?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really, it was a comment about the basis of this motion is founded on the openness and transparency aspect of our local democracy here in South Tyneside rather than a tracking system for the progress of motions. So I would just like to clarify, because I think it's really important that we stick to the facts on this, that the information that's requested in terms of the motion book is actually freely available already to elected members. And the motion book includes, in date order by council meeting, the actions, any correspondence, any updates and any responses, and that is freely available. So I wouldn't want the public to think any information is being withheld from elected members or hidden in any way. The public can also ask for that information should they wish and that will be freely given to them in the most updated format. It is a live document as a motion book would be expected to be. So those updates would be given at the point when any member of the public in particular requested the latest version of the progress of that motion. The council, of course, also operates a formal publication scheme and that fundamentally is based on publishing items of high public interest. That's what the publication scheme actually promises and delivers. The motions book, in terms of the requests for information in that respect, you know, would be driven often by demand as to what is published by the publication scheme. So I'd be interested to hear the level of demand. Certainly I, as an elected member and previously as a council officer in two local authorities, have never been asked for a site of the motions book by a member of the public, although it is freely, you know, available in terms of information. The council, I think what bothers me most of all by the motion itself being based on a premise of openness and transparency is that it infers that we aren't open and transparent, which certainly isn't the case and isn't my experience of working for and now being an elected member of this council. And I very much see my role as an elected member as partly to help local people to access any information that they find it difficult to, you know, find elsewhere. Normally, things aren't published that are available to be viewed publicly. So, you know, it's not the case that things are being hidden. Again, as a general right, by law, the public has access to information rights. But I do see that as elected members, we need to move away from this habit of talking down our council as being not open and transparent when it actually is. And I had a lot to do with that myself. And I'll be very happy to assist any Westall resident who is finding it difficult to find a particular piece of information. So I would encourage my constituents to contact me and I would hope that other elected members would do the same. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Best. Excuse me, somebody wish to speak? Councillor, sorry, councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the only thing I would like to say is, I would like to congratulate Angela Hamilton for the only Labour councillor in here that's got a backbone to stand up and tell the truth. Well done Angela Hamilton.
Councillor Thompson, do you wish to reply to the debate?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a little puzzled by councillor Best's statement. The reality of the situation is, and we've just had a perfect example tonight, the reality is, if you look in the members' book related to the members' question put in tonight on the fireworks motion, there was no detail of the resolutions. So that is the reality and that has been discussed with senior officers. And the feedback is, there's a loop that needs to be closed on resolutions and how they are actioned. And that was the background to this motion being submitted. So all I have to say, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Is the motion agreed? Colleagues, you have been asked to vote then on whether or not you agree to the original motion which does not incorporate the amendment. Shall we just have a vote by show of hands?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, what was the question?
So there was a dissenting voice there. So this is a vote on whether or not the motion in its original form is agreed by elected members. So if you're comfortable, we'll first just try that with a show of hands. So if all members who are for the original motion, please show their hands. And everybody against, please raise the hand. And there are no abstaining votes by my calculations there, but if there anybody is, can they raise their hand? Okay, so that was eight members for the motion in its original form and 36...
Okay, so that was eight members for the motion in its original form and 36 members against.
Thank you. The motion is agreed. Motion for has been submitted by councillor Purvis, Huntley, Proudlock, Dean and N Maxwell. Councillor Purvis, please present the motion to full council.
Madam Mayor and colleagues, at the start of the coronavirus pandemic in 2020, the UK government increased universal credit payments by £20 per week to support those most in need with the economic effects of the pandemic. The £20 increase took the standard rate for a single claimant over 25 from £317.82 to £409.89 per month. This had been due to end on 6th of April 2021, but will now last until 30th of September 2021. We recognise that this £20 increase per week has been a lifeline to many families across the borough and the country and hold deep concerns of the impact that cutting this will have on families within our community. Such is the level of cross-party opposition. I thought I might be here tonight saying the government had actually changed their mind and it was the motion from South Tyneside Council what done it. But no such luck. They are blundering ahead at full speed. The £20 top-up was brought in at the start of the pandemic to meet a need. The question is, has that need disappeared? And the answer is no. In fact, it is greater because price rises in the shops, massive increases in the cost of public utilities, gas and electricity. And it's to help, you've got the government saying that it's to help people into work when most of the people claiming are actually in work. When I decided to put forward this motion, I looked at the figures and statistics until my head was spinning. And I was then reminded of a famous quote by a philosopher who said that theory is grey but experience is green. So I decided to concentrate on the effect of these decisions, on people that I know, like my constituents, like the one who cried in front of me saying that she wanted to die because of the endless struggle that was her life. Only her children kept her putting one foot in front of the other. She couldn't afford to shower because her electric was on a meter and a card and it was needed for essentials, so she couldn't even take a shower. She took food banks, she used food banks, which kept her family going when there was absolutely nothing left in her purse. Now let me talk about food banks because I've got one in my ward, the key to life, which I visit and they do a really great job. But I burn with shame that in this year of 2021, when we're sending missions to Mars and beyond, developing artificial intelligence from the pages of HG Wells, we have working people queuing at food banks for a Freibentos pie and a tin of carrots. My father's generation returned from a war to a ruined country on its knees, but they had food on the table and a fire in the hearth because the Labour Government of Clement Attlee had made it their business to tackle want, proof of what can be done when there is political will to tackle an issue. Decent paid work for those who can, not zero hours contracts and support for those who can't. So this is what the motion actually seeks to do. We resolve to instruct the leader of the council and chief executive to write to the Secretary of State for Work and Pensions and the Chancellor of the Exchequer condemning this cut to universal credit and requesting a rethink of government policy. We want to ask the leader of the council to write to the borough's two MPs asking that they raise the issue with the Secretary of State at the earliest possible opportunity in the House of Commons. And finally, finally, to work with partners to monitor the impact of this cut to universal credit on the communities within our borough, including Citizens Advice, South Tyneside Homes and the local NHS. I move.
Thank you, councillor Purvis. Is the motion seconded? Councillor Huntley?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I would like to second and give my whole support to councillor Purvis on this very important motion. I reserve the right to speak to the debate later on. Thank you.
The motion is now open to debate by members. Does any member wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank colleagues involved in drafting this motion and in particular to councillor Purvis for that impassioned and, you know, impressive speech, and I'm not sure how anyone's going to follow it. But yeah, this is an issue that, as we know, poses a very real threat to some of the most vulnerable in our communities. I've seen some spinning of this, claiming that if you give someone an uplift and then take it away, you're not really making a cut. But that seems a bit odd when the same people claim that cutting police numbers and then increasing them is somehow a gain. The changes in benefit policy implemented in the early months of the COVID-19 pandemic crisis have provided critical financial support for many families during the pandemic. And although it may feel to some that we're beginning to come out of the public health crisis, the economic, sorry, the economic emergency has only just begun. It could also be argued that withdrawing this support would damage our recovery. Ending the boost would mean withdrawing about £8 billion from disposable incomes in 2021 to 2022. And cutting support from those on low incomes will reduce demand in the economy at a time when we're trying to promote recovery. But more importantly, that £20 uplift has been a lifeline to many people. As ward members, I'm sure all of us in this room will be aware of the impact that that cut will have. We've heard about the food banks and we know that vulnerable people will be at increased risk if this uplift is withdrawn. Losing it risks pushing millions of people into insecurity, debt and desperation. As a party, the Greens are clear that a universal basic income is the best way to ensure everyone has enough to live on, but until that happens, the uplift must be kept. I fully support this motion and encourage all colleagues to do the same.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Foster?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm here, being the only Conservative sat here, but I won't necessarily just follow the Conservative Party line. This pandemic has a drastic effect on people's lives. I think we all understand that and I personally will fully support this motion. I don't want to drift into party politics or the government, but I think overall the government has done a decent job. It's not perfect, but I think it's done a decent job in trying to support families through this unprecedented pandemic. So in short, I will support this motion. But like everything, one day, it's all going to have to be paid for, but that's a debate for another day.
Thank you, councillor Foster. Councillor Melling?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Often benefit claimants are referred to in disparaging ways, such as work shy malingerers or scroungers. We know that this couldn't be further from the truth. Most people fall into benefits through no fault of their own, ill health, poorly paid work, job loss or family circumstances. However, no matter the reason for needing to be on benefit, those families with children are particularly hard hit. Nationwide, there are in the region of four million children living in poverty. They suffer disadvantages in all aspects of their lives, developmental, education and social. This is not a plea for sentimentality. This inequality has serious consequences for community stability and economic growth as well as personal fulfilment. As well as the Joseph Roundtree Trust, which councillor Purvis mentions in her motion, the North East Child Poverty Commission, which I had the privilege of sitting on representing this council some time ago, has been actively involved in the National Keep the Lifeline campaign, which is calling on the government to reverse the universal credit cut. And it is a cut. As of May 2021, the latest available household figures, over 200,000 households in the North East are in receipt of universal credit, households which include over 160,000 children. In South Tyneside itself, more than 13,000 households are in receipt of universal credit, almost half of which have children, a total of around 10,000 children. That's 10,000 children in South Tyneside. Even before the pandemic, our region had one of the highest rates of child poverty in the country and the £20 increase to universal credit has been a lifeline for these families. Taking this away will push even more families in the North East into poverty and cause severe hardship for those already struggling to stay afloat. The commission says it's not too late for the government to do the right thing and recognise the long-term importance of having a social security system that protects those at risk of being pulled into poverty and is strong enough to pull people out. We now know that tens of thousands of children and young people across our region will be directly affected if this cut goes ahead in just six weeks' time. I support this motion so that South Tyneside can add its name to the campaign to reverse the cut and save our children. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Melling. Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Huntley, would you like to come back as you did reserve the right to speak later?
No, thank you. I think everybody's spoken with passion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Purvis? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We need to go back to motion three for clarification. It's my apologies, the motion was not agreed for any confusion. That's all I need to say here. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being so patient this evening. That concludes the business of the Borough Council. Can I please ask that everyone in the public gallery and all councillors please remain seated so strategy and democracy officers can call out row by row, leaving one at a time in order to coordinate a safety departure. Can I also take this opportunity to thank you all for attending this evening and for all those watching at home? Thank you. Safe journey home.